I'd like to call the regular council meeting on Tuesday, June 17th, 2014 in order. I'll ask everyone to please rise. We're gonna have the invocation led by Councilman Kara, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by special guest Emily Colombo, and deliver about...
This is a police officer's prayer. Almighty God, whose great power and eternal wisdom grace the universe, by Choverall Policeman and long-term officers, that tend from harm in the forms of their duties to stop crime, robberies, riots, and violence, we pray. Help them keep our streets and homes safe day and night. We recommend them through your love and care because their duty is dangerous. Grant them your unending strength and courage in their daily assignments. Dear God, protect these brave men and women. Grant them your almighty protection. Unite them safely with their families, past the duty as I do. Amen.
Emily, you can come up front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kara.
Here.
Conley. Evan.
Here.
Blasky. Here. Mace.
Here.
Startle. Here. Gersky.
Here. So we'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 21st, 2014.
Make a motion to accept this writ.
Second. We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tom to accept the minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the motion? Does anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If anyone opposed, no, that is happy. Before we get into our communications, I'm gonna turn the agenda over a little bit. We're gonna send the agenda over to our Recreation and Youth Committee. Dave, Mace is the chairman of the Recreation and Youth Committee. I'll begin through a brief presentation.
Thank you. It has been our tradition in the past, we started this about four or five years ago, honoring district champions or District 11 champions in the various sports that Tamaka High School competes in, whether it be in the fall, in the winter, or the spring seasons. This spring season, we had three track champions, and the baseball team won the district championship as well. They all went on beyond that, but that was the threshold that we have set for bringing people in here for that honor. So I'll start with the track champions. The first one I'd like to recognize is Monica Shinco. Come up. While she's coming up, in recognition of winning a gold medal in the girls' 800-meter run at the PIAA District 11 Class AA Championships on May 14th and 15th, Monica finished the run with a time of 2:23.38. Monica also earned gold in the girls' 800-meter run at the school league championships on May 7th, finishing in 2.616. Tamaka Borough Council commends Monica Shinco for these outstanding athletic achievements presented this day, 17th, 2014. Next one, Paige Dementriades. Hope I'm saying that right. Sorry. You were holding letters when you were last meeting. I have a little one that's beside over there. This certificate is awarded to Paige in recognition of winning a gold medal in the girls' javelin at the PIAA District 11 Class AA Championships on May 14th and 15th, 2014. Paige took first place with a throw of 132 feet, two inches. Paige also earned gold in the girls' javelin at the school league championships on May 7th, 2014, throwing 144, 144 feet, one inch. Tamaka Borough Council commends Paige for these outstanding athletic achievements. Congratulations. And unfortunately, Tyler Hope was not able to join us this evening. He was on vacation. Well, just briefly greet his certificate. Tyler won the gold medal in the boys' javelin at the district championship. That's the class AAA championship. He kept a first place with a throw of 187 feet, two inches, and also earned gold in the boys' javelin at the school league championships, throwing 178 feet, eight inches there. And we commend him for his outstanding achievement as well. We'll get this to him as soon as we're ready.
Come on, go on.
For the book?
Yes.
Okay. Throw, come back, please. Awesome. Well, they're coming up, you know, wanting to congratulate the parents and the coaches that assisted with these efforts as well. I'm sure the girls appreciate their efforts.
And you come up too.
And I did get a chance to talk to who might be here from the boys' baseball team. So, the coach and the players, or?
No, they're all involved.
They're all involved. That's what I got.
Kind of trouble right now playing against Tommy's.
It's tough on the baseball team during the summertime because they go from one season right into the next one. But Coach, if you'd like to come up on their behalf. I'll just read, we have a certificate for each individual team member, but this one happens to be the Harold Ball. But like I said, we have certificates for each one. And in recognition of winning the PIAA District 11 Class AAA Baseball Championship on May 27th, entering the place in the state playoffs for the second year in a row, winning this title requires not only physical ability, but also dedication and teamwork. Tamaka Borough Council commends the Tamaka area Blue Raiders varsity baseball team for these athletic achievements. Congratulations, Coach. Okay. You're late for a game, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Communication.
I have a few this evening. It's from Mark Peason. I, Mark Peason, on this day request my early retirement package. I will be 63 years old in July, and I would like my last day of employment to be July 29th. I will by then have used all my vacations, sick and personal time. I elect to receive my medical benefits for three years for myself and receive pension now at a rate of 88 percent, not at 65 years old. If you have any questions, please contact me.
Make a motion to accept this letter of presentation for the title. A motion by Dave, a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
Next is from Leonorega, Tamaka Area Arts Center and Safety Initiative Coordinator. This Tamaka Safety Initiative will once again participate in the National Night Out Event on Tuesday, August 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That evening will be devoted to raising awareness of the importance of each of the plays in the safety of our community, neighborhoods, and streets. That year, over 400 people participated in the event, including 15 organizations that provided information on various types of safety, games, entertainment, and giveaways. This year, the Tamaka Salvation Army will be hosting an all-day carnival in the North Railroad Street parking lot. In addition, we are anticipating doubling our numbers of participants and attendees this year. Filling the streets with positive activity and encouragement in the identified safety corridor is important steps in our efforts. I'm requesting sidewalk use and help in slowing vehicle traffic for pedestrian crossing in the following areas. In addition, may we post signs along the road telling people to be careful, pedestrians, before they reach the actual event. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact her. 100 block of Pine Street, south to American Hose Fire Company, both sides; 19 Mach Chunk Street, north to American Hose Fire Company, both sides; Triangle of Mach Chunk and Pine Street intersection; and the crossing of traffic from the North Railroad Street parking lot to the Tommy's Pony Shop.
A motion by Dave and a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
Next, excuse me, is from Thomas Wood, Secretary of American Hose Number One. It is, again, that time of the year to ask permission to hold our annual Fireman's Festival. As in the past years, we would like to hold it the first weekend in August. The dates this year would be Friday, August 1st, through Sunday, August 3rd. We would like to make the following request: To close Pine Street from Rod to Mach Chunk Streets from Thursday, July 31st at 8:00 a.m. until Sunday, August 3rd at 11:30 p.m. And the PennDOT Form TE-100 special event permit has been submitted to the state, and upon receipt of approved forms, a copy will be forwarded to the borough.
A motion by Dave and a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
Okay. Next is from David P. Lesniak. I have made the decision to take advantage of the early retirement offer for the year 2014. As in the UAW contract, page 23, Article 30.3, one can retire with 25 years of service or more and is of age 55 or older with 100 percent of retirement benefits. My retirement date is December 31st, 2014. My last day of work should have been January 29th, 2014. I know and accept that there is no compensation for lost accumulated time that has passed. Therefore, my last day of work is June 11th, 2014. I do think I should be compensated for last year's vacation time, which I was unable to use.
A motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. If anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
Next is from Timothy Trentley, Division Manager of Service Electric Cable Vision, writing to notify the council that I'm writing to review with you the rate adjustments and updated product information referenced in the attached letter, which will be sent to Service Electric Cable Vision customers in the coming weeks. Service Electric continues to make the commitment in your community to improve technology, customer service, and offer the very best in entertainment options. And if anyone would like to see the letter, they can see it after the council meeting. And last is a letter from the Black Rock District Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts of the Black Rock District, District Hawk Mountain Council would like to hold a campout at Al Creek Reservoir on September 26th, 27th, and 28th. And our representative is here from Black Rock in the audience.
Would you mind standing up and just introducing yourself? And maybe summarize your request.
My name is Steve Danerovic. I'm the roundtable commissioner and the event chairman for this event.
I'm Lori Danerovic, Black Rock District Membership Chair.
We would like to use Al Creek Reservoir for a district campery, if anybody unaware of what that is. We're bringing in all the scouts from the district. The district encompasses all of Schoolville County. We're anticipating approximately 150 scouts, plus leaders. Oh, we're planning on doing a service project that weekend for the Al Creek Reservoir Commission. We have a full program planned for the boys. And it's probably been 10 years since the Black Rock District had a campery, and we'd like to get back to that tradition. And after seeing all the improvements that were made out there, we thought that would be a perfect location to start.
We're also on the Al Creek Reservoir Commission, and we've talked to the people on the commission, and they're okay with it. They're on board.
We have a motion by Dave and a second by Justin to grant the request. If anybody have any questions or comments, just under the question, if you need anything to contact the borough manager and make arrangements for the day. Obviously, you're working with the commission.
Yeah.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
On behalf of the district, I want to thank you all.
Like, it kind of summarized what we've been asking Eastern Schoolville Plan to do for us, to make things a little easier to our community, which is a little different than hometown in West Penn. And they did write some things in there that would help the borough more. Have Josh, our code enforcement officer, ease the burden on him, where he would be able to make some decisions because Tamaka may only have 20-foot lots. But up in hometown, down in West Penn, they have the bakeries that they work on. And this would make it easier for contractors to do their work. It would save Josh half of his time. This is what I'm getting out of this. And...
I could read the letter. Did everybody get a copy of it?
It was in the email. Yeah.
It's Tamaka Borough Council. It's from Carl Smolligan, ESP. Says the members of Eastern Schoolville Regional Planning would ask that the borough council approve the recommended changes to our joint zoning ordinances. These changes improve our zoning in many important areas, like allowing for green energy in all districts, creating a general industrial area for mining, improving the ability to have relief from some of the setback requirements for homeowners in both R4 and R5 zoning areas, and many more important improvements that allow us to be more compliant with the state's municipality planning code. We greatly appreciate the efforts of the four planning commissions that have reviewed these changes, but we must now move forward so that we can finalize these changes. Thank you for considering this request, and we look forward to hearing from council.
Only other communities that are in the ESP have approved this, and Tamaka is the one that needs to approve this also. And I think Frank Kane may have something to say about it.
Can I address the board?
Please. State your name and address.
Yep. I'm Frank Kane, 134 Penn Street. I'm a businessman in town. I have a property, a home in town, and I'm a member of the zoning board. Okay, time and again, people have to get variances to put up a garage, a shed, a carport. And it's an economic burden on them. The cost of a variance today is $500. The way the code is written, you or I probably couldn't go and get a variance and fulfill the code, you know, the way the code is written. I'd probably have to hire a lawyer to present the case properly, and I could still be denied. Many cases, people have to come for a variance merely to get a setback because we require 10 feet on both sides. If your lot's 25 feet wide, you're not going to put up a garage, a carport, or anything. So what I read that the planning commission had recommended, that we decrease those setbacks, you know, to three or five feet. And my recommendation would be, please do that, for the good of the borough, for the good of the taxpayers. And then more people can fix up their properties, make Tamaka a better town. But I do realize that these setbacks are made in regards to emergency people, like police, firemen, and anybody that has access to homes in emergencies. So I would definitely listen to their recommendations. But I believe that Josh, in many cases, has to refer these things for variance merely because that's what the code says. I believe that in some municipalities, the code enforcement officer is given more leniency, where he can allow these things without going to the level of a variance. And I just strongly encourage that. The other thing I feel a problem area is our downtown. We have a very dense downtown. The requirements in the code, that every business has so many parking places, depending on number of employees, number of tables at a restaurant, it really doesn't apply to our borough. If there's any way we could get language in there to ease that burden, I really think we could help bring more businesses into Tamaka. And a final thing, Josh, who is our zoning officer, he is burdened with constant people needing help. First, they come for a permit. Then he has to advise them what they have to do to get a variance. And people make four and five trips to see him to get, put up a simple carport. Any language in the code that we can make an amendment to to ease their burdens, I would totally appreciate that. I really think it's for the good of the borough. Okay? And thank you for your time.
We didn't make a motion to send a letter to the Eastern Schoolville Plan for recommended changes? That, yeah. He approved the recommended changes. This is moving forward because he has to look at all of it across that, of the... I'll make a motion that we advertise, or we send a letter to the ESP and tell them that we are in favor of moving forward.
A motion by Tom, a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have just one question about section R4 and R5. Just need to...
High-density residential.
So like, more like, we're in boroughs than hometown, or...
More like Arlington Street than Yeti Circle. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy. Any other correspondence? Borough managers report.
Yes, thank you. I guess the first thing I have is two resolutions that I'd like to present to council. At a previous meeting, council had voted to apply for a multimodal transportation grant from two agencies, Commonwealth Financing Authority and also PennDOT. Both agencies are offering essentially the same grant. So council agreed to apply to both agencies essentially double the potential to see if they're necessary. Our application would be for the Central Street Bridge and also street scape improvements on Central Street. Either actually the first block of Central Street includes the school street. So I have two resolutions. I already motioned out in a summary of them. The applications are due by the end of March, so I... So I have to...
Make a motion that council adopt the resolution to apply for a grant to the multimodal transportation fund with an amount of $196,200.
A motion by Dave, a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
To clarify, that the first one will be from PennDOT.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Just under the question, we did apply for this grant in the past, so we'll be able to prepare, we can vary, prepare an application if we like. Anybody from the floor? If not, the borough will call over.
Kara.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Blasky. Yes. Mace.
Yes.
Startle. Yes. Gersky.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution to apply for a multimodal transportation fund grant with an amount of $196,200 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for bridge lane and sidewalk improvements. Stay for 300. I'll second that motion.
A motion by Dave, a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from...
This was, this is the second time we've applied for this, the second.
When we did, when they designed the bridge project, we asked PennDOT to include it in the design of the bridge project. They said they couldn't, but we could apply for a grant through the multimodal program. So then we applied for the multimodal grant. Denied. So we recently...
We applied to the two agencies.
Back then, you could only apply to PennDOT.
Thank you.
The Commonwealth Financing Authority never planned that. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, the borough will call over.
Kara.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Blasky. Yes. Mace.
Yes.
Startle. Yes.
Thank you. I guess the second item I had was concerning our community development grant program. I was hoping to see you in the second public hearing. However, that didn't count because we still don't know where our allocation is going to be over 2014. We can't schedule the second hearing. We have work to publish.
That's that for the university.
Paper for the hearing, so... When we do have that, we'll try to let them know that we can schedule the second hearing. Also, there was two retirement letters written, of course, Marvin's, our mechanic, and our treatment plant operator. But there are no objections. I'd like to post building for mechanics position. Boarding house applicants, that's the first step in our contract. And also, training a water plant operator. We work close to that house. We've had an allotment. So our next step would be to go outside, have a license, or some have an education, short of time, to get a license. So there are no objections. I'd like to proceed with that.
Do you want a motion or do you just want us to say we're ahead? Okay, so... I mean, I'll make a motion to close the vacancies for the camp.
That would have to come out of the person first, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't we be advertising for the license for our...
Yes.
Make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to close vacancies for that. Thank you.
A second?
A second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
Like Dan, wants for a water treatment plant operator.
A motion by Tom, a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? You know anybody with a license? Please have a look.
Mike, just to clarify what you're talking about, for the water treatment position, looking for somebody first off with a license. If we wouldn't be able to find somebody with a license, we'd take somebody with partial, maybe credit towards a license? There's a second round, and then if we certainly can't find anybody, we'd be forced to train somebody in that position. Providing they get credentials within a six-month period, a year period?
It takes several years to get a water or a school plant license.
So they would actually have, we would be looking for them to actually take the classes, start taking the classes at a certain point?
There's several tests that you must successfully pass. And there's also a on-job training. So it will take several years if you start a draft. That's why our preference is to look for someone that already possesses a license in case the water time class A license. You can't find a class A license as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, that is happy.
That's all.
Chief, you've been busy.
All departments have been busy.
Yes.
I just have one small item of this.
I say we go off a little, in my recommendation, return to the company, it's a thing we have to have as a priority.
Has it been on that field street at all?
There was working up there because the battery wasn't charged. Kevin had a contact accompanying another battery, they sent another battery, set up there, just a little bit, now we need the upgrade.
But you definitely think in the future?
In the future, it's certainly not an option, but right now, there's other force upgrades we need to do to make that way.
It's kind of a lot of preference, I mean, that's something we need.
How long was the trial?
Thirty days, we've got a little bit longer. Yeah, they're not, they're not real.
It was extended, with the battery.
Right. Yeah, they gave us more time, the battery, I don't know if it'll charge for three days. Well, normally it's like a couple of weeks, the battery may work.
I'd like to make a recommendation, we take the chief's suggestion, overturn that, the assigned, refer back to the building equipment committee, make a recommendation on if and when we do want to.
I, I think that most of that came out of parking traffic, and I was just interested to see what kind of data we were getting, make a decision at that point, or we can look at some of the data to determine whether or not it's useful or not.
Can we send it back to your committee, take a look at it, talk to the chief?
Well, I'm okay with your recommendation, I guess I just wanted to see what the data was.
It's definitely useful, it's a good tool to have, it's just something we don't need in our shed right now.
Right.
Not saying in the future we can't readdress it, but right now, there's too many force upgrades we need that.
Right. And I was in that, I was saying.
It needs a good piece of equipment, I'm sold on it, but it's just not something we need, it's something we'd like to have.
I think it definitely had positive impacts in both of the neighborhoods, I heard the, a good response in both neighborhoods. I ran into one in Hazleton recently, and it opens your eyes, it certainly does, and it makes you look, and then obviously, now you're standing on there, it does slow traffic. But it is expensive, and we do have some other equipment that they, sort of, that are necessary before we can do that.
We have a motion to refer back to the building equipment committee, see if and when we do anything with getting our own, do that motion.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Building equipment. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Congratulations, it's a C P, it's a bad, it's a bad, it's a lot of people involved.
Keep up the good work, and make sure that everybody involved, I know how much council and the people involved are really appreciative.
Is there any way that we can commend any of the board by writing like a letter of big, big thanks, like to everybody who wasn't involved, for, for, for council seals, and similar to Christine Holman, you know, was thinking about that today, you know, to all staff, just to work, thank you.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, and we send a letter to everybody involved with the Earl Seal, certificate of appreciation, whatever we can do to everybody involved with the, most recent police act of the day.
Motion by Justin, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Chief, was the culmination of a lot of work from months and months, and a lot of anxiety, and a lot of, a lot of hard work?
There's a lot of work done by our department, and everyone else assist, assist us picking everyone up, we did all the work, you know, outside, we did all that ourselves.
And from, what I've been hearing from people is that this was done because of people we part of, wanting, wanting to make Tamaco a better town.
Absolutely. When I say we didn't outside assist, we get assistance with DAs, former money, and everything else, it's not, what I'm saying is leading up to arrests, we did the work that way, we get assistance in other ways.
This team started in 2006, Chief Weaver was a corporal at the time, and he was interested in making a change, we asked the chief at the time, if he partied on if we could do something, and he agreed, and he started this, this task force, and it's grown, and over the past eight and a half years, his folder has, has grown over and over again with the amount of work that they've done, which, it's certainly a testament to the blood , sweat, and tears that we've put into it, but our drug task force at Tamaco, Department of Police Department is the second to none, I mean, they do a great job, and I'm certainly proud of them, I know the council is, and the community of Tamaco.
And we're appreciating the council, we send guys to schools, we ask them to talk and stuff, never, ever complain about overtime, my body's ever, you never even mentioned it was too difficult, so we appreciate your help, being able to do it.
When you need cash, made available, if you do the drug buys. This group has been very supportive, and we just.
Very supportive, and the point of that, we appreciate your help.
It's, it's made a lot of parents feel a lot better, that some of these people who are doing this awful thing to kids are taken off the streets. People, because I guess what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna try to fill these spots, some of these people who are arrested, so it just keeps going on, and you're just gonna keep working on it.
Correct.
And Kathy's helped us build a collage over the last eight and a half years of shots in the Times News, and, you know, there, there is a wall of shame gone over there that just keeps growing and growing, and, and by publicizing it, letting people know what we're doing, to let everybody know what's happening, we often get questioned, and I'm gonna read a little bit about that shortly, but nevertheless, it's, it's certainly good to know the team, know their job, and does their job, and they get the tools to do that, that's all appreciated.
Like you say, I can't, he's going way above and beyond, help us with that.
Slow down, slow down, you're right.
This is out of all this.
Morning, noon, or night.
She's terrific, Ellen.
Keep up the good work. Okay, committee reports, building equipment committees.
Carrie, you're up.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept a proposal for J W's general contract in Tamaco at the amount of five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars to install a new thirty-year shingles on Magistrate Road.
Second. Motion by Carrie, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else?
Public Safety Committee, Dan.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve proposals from Metro Alert, Metro Alert, in Dark Mountain Technologies, total of fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, and they set new computer equipment and software for Tamaco Police Department, and the quote is a patch.
Second. Motion by Dan, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chief Weaver for taking the time to walk us through that entire process, and clearly, clearly the upgrades were needed, particularly on the data side, so that we don't lose that historical data, of things, things that go on throughout the borough by address, by person, all those kinds of, all that kind of stuff, so, expensive but yet well-dated, but definitely needed.
Anything else, Dan?
No.
Parking and traffic committees.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a handicap parking space application for Joseph Matika at two ten B Street.
Motion by Dan, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Couple of other quick items under parking and traffic. I have sat down with Christine, and we're just about wrapping up the renewal process, I shared a couple loose ends with the committee about some, some non-renuals. I also did speak to Tony Prudential at Stadium Cafe today, about his request from, I believe that was May, no, excuse me, April, and I'm gonna circle back with the members of the committee on that. And there's only one other thing, I guess I have some questions about, and this is primarily from Chief and Mayor, South Railroad Street. Okay? Is South Railroad Street a turnaround, or not a turnaround, or what?
How would I make it work?
Okay, I guess.
Behind Cherry's tree. Know what you're talking about?
This is related to the major's.
The major's house.
Former Ginnie Major's property.
Some of our traffic gets back out.
Okay. It's an awkward situation, sure. Up here now, it's, it's a screen until you get to the former major's property, catch a spot, right? It just stops, right? So, it's a difficult situation. All right. And so, the property's changed hands, and so it really is private property? Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Neighborhoods downtown, District.
I have five motions here. First motion is to approve a certificate appropriateness for the construction of a ramp facade changes and minimum installations at one nineteen, one twenty-three West Wall Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for construction of addition of ramp at one seventeen South Greenwood Street.
Second. Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for the demolition of thirteen South Lehigh Street and siding of adjacent building.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of thirteen South Lehigh Street and siding of adjacent building.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And a motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of two fifty-two West Collin Avenue and the siding of adjacent building.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a brief question, maybe it's in here, I didn't see it. Seeing demolitions, are they private entities doing demolitions, or are they part of?
The, yeah, the one, one of the fire on South, we did come south, we actually were looking at doing, I believe one of them, down here from the corner of, that was told we were looking.
They were recommendations from Dan, straight.
And I know, you, I've seen the list they shared, the list is, it's expensive, this is a property that we have, I was excited, I didn't know we helped them, they shared a property that was gonna be our time.
That would be great.
But we have to go through the same process, we have to redevelop.
Thank you. There's several that we have, each two are in historic history, they require hard construction, the others, they just require, you know, demolition.
And certainly, I know that we're going through the same process as everybody else.
Anybody from the floor, address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else, Dan? Recreation and new for you.
I have two more motions. First is motion to accept a proposal from Pioneer Gold Buildings Incorporated, this will behave in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to build a storage building at the Lower Alprick Dam.
Second. And just another question, where is the money for this?
I should have liked, I should have probably prefaced the motion with that, but both of these are basically, both motions are formalities, and as far as I'm concerned, the Alprick Recreation Committee appropriated grants for the origin foundation for the construction of both of these projects, but because the projects are actually being constructed on a rental property, they would like us to approve the project.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And second, motion to accept a proposal from Storage Solutions by Snyder L L C, of the Ringled, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars to build a ticket booth at the Lower Alprick Dam.
Motion by Dave, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question, is the financing for this project the same, the same as the previous one?
Anybody else? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Does anybody have, there's another scout, or activity going on down there that's kind of revolving around this, is there not? Or is that, is that? Their letter was written during correspondence, is that what you're talking about, or something? Right, well, I guess I just was reading correspondence about this, and they were trying to do this to support that, or, I don't know, part of their service project is gonna be related to these technologies, it might be, since the people that were here would also, it must be O C R C, it must be that, or it's all really that. Must be that, okay.
Anything else on the recreation?
Yes.
Any other committee reports?
I'm sorry, I had one question, under recreational, or recreation type stuff. Kevin, I don't know if we talked about possibilities or stealing this a bit or two, to look at, give it a pressure tank for the bathrooms and concession stands, or are there, I'm sorry, concession stand at the pool. Try and keep that as low as possible, as close to the front door as we can.
So anybody from the floor that wishes to address council, without any issues, stand up and state your name and address to the record.
Burn Valley from Tamaco, Locust Street. I'd like to know what verse I D, and what you're gonna do with that empty building out there, what your plans are, the former drugstore building.
We don't plan to do anything with this, it's not a building.
Well, I understand it's under litigation.
You mean the C V S building?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't own that building.
Well, I know you don't own it, I think that's what's been happening. Have you any plans on it, what you're gonna do?
We're not gonna do anything, to be.
And what can we do, we don't own the building.
Well, you don't.
Yeah.
Does, does anybody have the keys for it?
We don't, no.
I think, I searched out there a couple weeks ago, I found the back doors open. Evidently, someone's getting in there, doing something, or staying there. So I committed a red alert, notified the police, and they went out, now I see the doors are closed, but they've done a lot of damage to that building already at the back. They, they destroyed that enclosure, middle enclosure, and they've also put their, their name on the doors.
We, we'll notify the owner of record that the building was unsecured and local protection. We, we'll notify the, the owner of record that the building was unsecured and the local action, we did?
We did secure it. Uh, that is one of the things that our co-officer asked us to do, but we did cut the grass and secure the building.
Yeah, I see it was cut.
But that's about as far as we could go.
Well, how long I get in touch with the people owner? You give it to your, you give it to your address?
I could give you an address to contact, yes.
Appreciate it very much. Because the longer that's after, the more damage it will do out there. And it's a beautiful building, it could be used. For example, the police department could have a bigger corridor than what they have right now, they're regent in over there, they need bigger corridors. Number one right there, I have two or three tenants could go in there and put that building to good use.
Sir, I understand that that is under litigation for serious structural problems.
What's the structural difference, what's wrong?
My knowledge, there's, there's a problem with the foundation-
The foundation is sinking.
-causing serious cracks in the floor.
Did you see it inside?
No, I didn't, thanks.
See, that's it, nobody saw it, neither did I. That's why I'd like to have the keys to find out just what condition that building's in, because if it's, it's suitable, I may wanna buy it.
I understand, but you, just, just for-
You what?
We were given a structural report on the building years ago, that's why the people see-
Well, I'd like to know-
We could give you a copy of that.
It's differential settlement, uh, the building is settling differently.
Well, I'd like to know what's settling, because the last time I was in, there was nothing wrong.
We can get immediate-
And the forest settling, that's, that's the same property that we have the big A on and the building below it. Did I help fill that in out there, I know. And that building is not sinking, if it was, I'd fix it.
We'll, we'll get you a copy of the report that we had, it's from many years ago, it's one of-
Kevin, can I fit it up in your office?
Sure, sure. Just give me a, give me a damn move.
Yes.
I think everybody would like to see that building-
Yeah, that's a shame for that, but that's not, nice the building in Tamaka, it's not, it's not being damaged, I'm through it. But the longer it's empty, the more they're gonna be getting caused problems, keep, keep this office busy. Now, one of his men closed that door, but it was up, so that means someone's in that building. And what they're doing in there, I don't know, but I'd like to in, and find out. And if it's gonna be up for sale, I'd rather be interested.
If you wanna stop there, we'll get the copy of the report and the, and the address of the owner, the contact information for the owner.
I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Good luck to you, I'll be able to do something.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address council, Michelle?
I'm Michelle Mahoney from three thirteen Norx Burke Street, Tamaka. There is a dumpster, I don't know who it belongs to, out in front of the pla, by the playground. It has been there since snow removal. How long are they allowed to be parked on the street? And this ain't a little one, this is a big, a big one. Cause somebody said the playground get, needs to, get that off of here, it doesn't belong to us. I don't even know who it belongs to, but I would like for it to be gone because it's there too long.
Do you know whose it is?
No, I have no clue who it belongs to.
Can I, can I answer that question for you? That belongs to Ju, uh, Justin McCarron. He's remodelling the house he bought on Penn Street, that's why it's there. Uh, he got permission to put it on the street.
Oh, for that long? For months?
Well, I don't know how long, he's, he's remodelling the whole house, he's tearing all inside apart. So, he, he works with us, I hope he's, he's up there six or seven days a week, but he is working in that building. And I, I was told to address that if I could, so thanks for telling me.
Do you know Justin?
Well, yeah, I work with him.
Michelle, you know Justin?
Yeah, I know Justin.
Can you talk to him and see, see what his timeline is?
Yeah, I mean, cause it's there a pretty long time.
I mean, cause campers are allowed on streets for how long a week?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what he, that's, I suppose, I'm sorry, I, I, I work with him every day, I see him. So, I'll get, I'll keep in touch with tomorrow, I'll ask him. Alright.
It is secure, I mean, it's just, people get tickets when they park their car and with street removal, you know, clean the streets, they're getting ticketed and this thing is staying there and is he getting ticketed for it?
Probably not, typically we encourage people to bring downstairs to clean out the floor. You know, we try, we try not to, we try to encourage that, but we can have Josh take a look at and see how long it's been there and make sure-
It's been there a while.
It's there about a month.
No, it's not.
It's since snow removal.
It's like three months.
It's three months.
It's three months, well, I will, I'll see him tomorrow morning, cause I work with him every day.
I'm just, I'm just saying, because you're gonna have people coming down here with tickets and saying, well, that's parked there. Why, I'm not paying this ticket, you're not ticketing him, why should we pay tickets? I mean, if I see Justin, I'll talk to him to see how much longer it's gonna be there.
Thank you. Anybody else on the floor?
Hope Curry, one eighteen Clay Street, Tamaka. I'm gonna bring you, but string up an old sore, I think it's time council draws up an ordinance to control the cat population in this borough. It's getting out of hand. How is it? I was out to the police station Friday night, the officer came up to my house and I told him where the cats were coming from. He went over and talked to the guy, and the guy said, yes, I have cats, but I keep them in a house. That's not true, they're all over the neighborhood. I went out that night and on my brand-new sofa cover, there was a cat, bleh, all over the place, all over the next chair and down on the pavement. That's terrible, I should, or anybody else should have to put up with that, but, well, I mean. If there's cats in town, keep in the house or something like that, don't let them run, and that guy's porch, or that guy's porch, or somebody else's. Next door to him is a lady, she stopped putting her furniture out for that reason. Two doors down from her is a lady across the street, she threw all her covers away from her furniture, her rug was peed on, stain she had to throw out away. The guy next door to me had a sling up, the cats messed that up. They messed me up and the lady up, and the two sore doors up, she was out in the yard, the cat attacked her while she was planting her, in her yard. There's something has to be done about that. I mean, we pay taxes, we keep our house nice, but we have to put up with this stuff, I complained two years ago. I just told the trap them, that's not my job. And the lady that we talked to that will trap them said, she'll come and put a trap at my house, but she'll have to watch it so nobody gets into it, other than a cat. Then they'll take the cat, spay, neuter, keep it out of, whack, out of, what, away for about thirty days, then bring it back to the same neighborhood and release it, that's not gonna do any good. It's not fair, we pay our taxes, keep our house nice, when I have a cat even go out sit in the front porch. Now, over the last couple of years, on the back porch, cat here and that, one cat here and that. My wife's putting a bench on there, and a bench, you shouldn't have to do that. I challenge anybody in this room to make a motion to adopt a cat ordinance to control the cats in this borough.
How many cats does he have?
What?
How many cats? How many cats?
How many cats does this neighbor have?
I have no idea.
It's more than one though, no?
I would say so. I don't go over there. They come over to me. I was gonna, the officer was very nice, he, he, uh, I don't know what his name was, Ordner or something like that, Rick?
Ordner.
Ordner, that's the fellow, he was very nice, did a good job. But this guy has a bunch, he even admitted to the officer, I don't know what's in the report, Rick, but he admitted to the officer that he had cats, but I don't let them out, that is not true. Every major I talk to about this, they'll verify that those cats are coming out of that property. Now, the irony of the whole thing is, since Friday night, we haven't seen a cat in the neighborhood. So, he must be keeping them in now. But if it happens again, I'm gonna come out to the police station, well, I challenge anybody in this room to make a motion, to make an ordinance up to control the cat population in this town.
What would, what would the ordinance do, Mr. Curry?
Same as a dog ordinance.
A licensing ordinance?
Well, sure. If you have a, like, a cat license and you catch it, you know who it belongs to, it should be at his house, not my house. You could draw up an ordinance, just the same as you do for a dog. Poor dog's in trouble as soon as he does something wrong, but a cat can do anything in the world, no matter where it's at or whose property it's on.
So, if we would make, vote for an ordinance that all cats in Tamaka would be licensed, how many people do you think we would have come to council meeting? And say, what are you doing that for?
What do they do when, do you craft ordinance, have any dogs, if you like?
That's part of the state license, that's still state part of the law.
Can this, can this neighbor, he sent the letter and it is illegal for your-
You know what, if I can make a recommendation, Barry Isaac does our code enforcement, does a code enforcement for a lot of different communities, maybe we can talk to them and see if any, if any community has had success with, with any type of enforcement of this. Either from a quality of life issue or a cat licensing issue or any type of, of way to enforce that. Cause it hasn't been a problem, it's a problem this time of year in, in a lot of neighborhoods.
This has been going on for a couple of years, you know, we already did this a couple of years ago, two years ago if I remember right. But anything you can do, I appreciate, but I'd like to see a cat ordinance just like you have a dog ordinance and endorse it. I wouldn't worry about how many people's gonna come here, you have a job to do, do it.
We did make some kind of ordinance about cats.
About feral cats, that, that's the, you're, you're saying this gentleman says that they are his cats, he's not feeding-
He told the police officer that, the police officer told me.
Okay. But is there at least a possibility that he in fact is feeding feral cats?
I have no idea.
Yeah, okay, well-
All I know is what I see on my front porch. And I don't like it. And I don't think you would like it either.
No.
None of you would like it. So, let's do something.
You said the cats haven't been there since Friday?
I was gonna bring it down with me tonight, but my wife stopped me. I was gonna bring the whole mess down and show it to all of you. And that, that cushion costs a couple bucks, you know where it's going now, the trash can, that's not right. That's not right, for somebody that got cats and let them roam the street and mess my property up? And then he say you can't do nothing to the cats because it could be arrested? Where do you win? So, whatever you can do, I challenge you to have an ordinance for cats like you do dogs.
Anybody else?
Andy? Andrew Livey-Guth, Metron Street, Dutch Hill, Tamaka. I'll add on to what he said about the CVS, I, I know two people that actually asked about that. Um, it sadly, you gotta tear it down before you can buy, it's stupid, you can't, you have to tear it down to actually buy the property. They won't sell that as this, it's, I talked to two people that, um, it's terrible, I think that's stupid.
Have you talked to the property owner?
Well, that's, that's two people, I won't say their names, that had, had, had made bids on it, and they told me, not gonna do it. I trust their, their knowledge, they told me. I didn't call, but I will, but I'm sure that's true, cause it's, uh, another thing, um, the one-way on Railroad Street? Uh, Kevin, questions for you, I guess. There's a lot of vehicles that go through there, chief, how many think, how many vehicles, your estimate, go through there one-way? At their five points?
On North Railroad?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I go the wrong way, I apologize.
Oh.
On North Railroad.
On thousand.
I know, yeah, but I know not a thousand, just-
Tractor trailers are the most, they're doing, and they do it because of GPS units. And they change the signage there, and usually when we stop a trucker for doing it, it's up in the lot. And what I say to them is, if you're a professional truck driver, you're not reading these signs. It's out of state truck drivers is what it is, it's, they've done everything they can to correct it by the signage, not much else we can do to make it any better. The fortunate thing is, when they go up there, they're not traveling at excessive rate of speed, they can see other cars, and once they start going, they realize what they're doing, and then they, they try to back up and then we assist them, they get up on the jump. And lately, what we even have in, in that area, cars coming down railroad and trying to turn left, tractor trailer trying to turn left on the wall. Twice in one day, not just in one.
That, that cost us a lot more.
I, I guess, um, my best friend was almost hit the other day by a car, and if I tried to trail, I actually, um, like, seconds away from getting hit. So, I think we've been pretty lucky, there hasn't been nothing bad that I, that I recall there. But it's obviously something that, it is happening, even though they're not, they're, they're not reading the signs, I still think something else could be done, I know those signs-
They cite the driver when we, we have to do that, we cite them sometimes, especially if they make it all the way up, we cite them, and get them back for a real line.
Yeah, most of them, they get, most of them are already gone, you know, you can't be everywhere.
Probably cameras, many, probably have, and, obviously some doing it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any else see what could be done to change?
I mean, there's a couple of suggestions I have, and I brought some to Kevin a while back, um, I think last year. Might sound outrageous, but, I mean, even one vehicle going the wrong way, especially since you know, I can't picture any other major road anywhere around here that, that, that has happened so. So, to have one vehicle, especially to have a trailer go through, you shouldn't accept that, you know what I mean? Even, even a lighted, something like a light above there, it sounds, might not be the beautiful thing, but-
Neon sign, turn here.
Just something to get their attention more, yeah. Just something else to get their attention more, or make the lines, signs larger, I took a picture, I should have brought with me today. And if you, as a tractor trailer, you can see a lot more signs, so, you're right, I don't know why they go straight, but they still do. Um, those other cars are not, cause there's still all those signages in the way, the pole, one pole, there's still three signs I can see. Of course, if you're from the area, you know, but we're, we're three oh nine, so of course, people are gonna go, they're not from the area. Is there something else, when's the last time you wrote up the Penda? I mean, do, if, if I write a, like, a, a suggestion, um, can I get approval from you guys?
Yeah, we can talk to their traffic, then it's when we, 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 or like that, we did talk to them.
I, I did talk to Penda a couple times about that situation, cause the, the police have told us that people are going the wrong way, there are occasion. That's when we moved, uh, there was a dual, uh, there's dual front air signs there. Well, the one was partially blocked by a crossbar pole. Uh, so I asked them if we could move, uh, move that and attach it to that crossbar pole, make it more visible, and he said that was fine. Cause it was in probably moving a couple feet, but he didn't have any further suggestions. He said it, it's properly posted, uh, and I believe, uh, as I recall, he blamed the GPS thing to, uh-
I, I agree with you.
-tractor trailers and, and private cars.
Even though it's, um, the legality behind Penda with the rules and stuff, whatever, it still happens.
Any further suggestions for us?
Any, any suggestions on the-
Traffic signal for three oh nine south on, on Railroad Street. What I'm going with this is, could you put a sign on the backside of the crossarm? Both, uh, three oh nine south, it would be-
If they would increase it to, and, and, uh, people-
A little bit, no, it wasn't the north side, the five points?
If you're heading south on three oh nine.
Okay, I guess I just gotta go through there all the time, and then eventually I'm gonna do the mental picture of where the signals actually are, and be a-
It is, it's a technical score.
So, you're talking about the stoplights, the people having it down Railroad Street?
Right, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, put, put on the backside of that crossarm, it's basically right over the, the entry that we're trying to prevent, or try to keep people from going forward through there.
Someone says, forget about GPS, go that way.
Anything we do has to be permitted by them, it has to be, uh, changed to the permit by them. Uh, we can't just make changes to signage or signals, uh, stay well by the permission.
So, what can I do to help get more, um-
Could you contact the GPS people and tell them, is it, is it possible for, for Google Maps or whoever generates those maps to, to put some sort of-
It probably is, but that's probably, I doubt it's gonna help as much as a, as a larger sign or a lighted sign, I think a sign would work better. Uh, something of that nature, something that says, don't go straight. I know there are a few signs, there, but something else needs to be there, should be, there should be no cars going that way, one car is wrong. I know they always say, somebody else told me, they reach for two fatalities, but they make a change, I'm sure that's false, I know, I totally agree with it. But it should, they should wait for something to happen, they should just, just put a darn sign up, put something else up. I know they can't, don't do something straight across, then you have a big pole of the D four square park, it'd look pretty ugly, they should at least have a, add one more larger sign, or just make the signs even larger.
They have some places that are those strobe lights, it would be very distracting, but, but lights-
Yeah, no, something, something that says, hey, you know what I mean? I don't know, the chaotic intersection, you come to the intersection, it's pretty stressful.
Almost like a strobe light on the do not enter sign, yeah, let me touch it to the sign that said, yes. But one thing we, one thing you can do is, if you, if you can make a recommendation for, and maybe the back parking traffic, you can take a look at it, and then we can, we can run it by, yeah. Anything that we do there with signage, it, it all has to be in like that, but we can certainly try to make, if we have a suggestion, they've been open to our suggestions, they haven't, they haven't agreed with all of them or implemented all of them, but they have some of them, so if you have a specific recommendation for an increased sign or new sign or something like that, let us know, we could, we could run it by Dennis Toomey and Penda again and see if they'd be willing to do it.
Yeah, I only brought it up to you here today, so I figured, why, why bring up ideas, keep mailing stuff back and forth, I want to get you guys' suggestions. So, if I, I'll sit down with the Parking and Traffic Committee, and it can work.
Why don't you just make a recommendation, if you have a suggestion on a new sign, or a larger sign, or whatever?
Okay, I'll do that.
And then we can take a look at it, and pass along to Penda.
Okay, we'll do it. Thank you.
I think there's something, though, to try and contact the GPS vendors, because, I mean, I know when I'm driving, it's, it's not local people that are doing it, it's because we all understand. You know, if I'm driving somewhere out in the area, and I have a GPS unit, I'll, in the first movement, I'm looking more at the little screen on my dashboard than I am at the, at the signs in the, wherever it is that I happen to be in right, so...
Does anybody know who, who makes those GPS maps?
I think there's one that you're aware, it would be, I don't know if Doris is doing that, but Doris probably is.
I'll write them too. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Anybody else? Anybody else on the floor? Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mike. One of the pleasures that I have enjoyed over the last couple of weeks is reading some of the dear Tamaco letters that have come in, in the project. And I know we've got a couple more months of accepting these letters, and there's been quite a few that's come in. Some have been fun and friendly, and some have been a little dark, and, and it's just good to have, no matter what, what the case may be. So here it goes. My name is William Hefner, and I live just outside of Tamaco. I was born and out of town, raised in a blink of an eye town called Warfield. I moved out when I was eighteen, then I was married. We have two kids, a girl and a boy. We finally ended up here in Tamaco. We've been here for about eight years. I was never here before we moved here, so I found out a lot about this town. Not sure if anyone wants to hear this or not, but I see drug dealers on corners, high school kids in jail. What's to come? I mean, drugs have seemed to have taken over our town. At the meeting, we watched a video doing a play. What he's referencing is, these letters will be put together, and we're looking to do a play, as I talked about in previous council meetings, for those people who may not understand. And, and put on a, a production inside our town with the community involved. That's what he's, he's referencing. When he saw this, he thought rock opera, kinda like West Side Story. Good taking over bad. The community getting together, taking down drug dealers, dark to comedy musical, using songs that you hear on the radio, songs that people know. It could be a powerful statement, and I think the people, the community, would like to see a coming of change. They need a peace of mind for their families, that their kids are going to be okay in school. That's what it is, peace of mind. William Hefner, Tamaco resident parent. And, you know, it's nice to see people write letters. Some are good, some are bad, and, you know, it was kinda a nice choice to pull tonight, knowing that the chief and staff had pulled down many drug dealers in the area. But keep the letters coming, whatever they may be, dark or cheery, it's certainly good, and it's, it's all gonna help putting together a story. Got a few things to go over. Parking and traffic, Dan talked briefly before. Dan, and Tom, and Dave, and I join you guys for meetings often. This is probably what is, what maybe considered the toughest committee on Borough Council to deal with, the problems of parking and traffic. I know folks of the community get most excited when it comes to a, a pothole, a parking situation, speeding situation, stop signs. And by all means, it's, it's, it's viable issues that everybody has, but they're probably the most heated issues. If everyone, Mike often referred to this, slow down, stop for stop signs, stop for red lights. We're courteous in neighborhoods with parking with their neighbors. And, and one thing that's inevitable is, is the way the roads deteriorate throughout the winter and summer months, and our staff does absolutely the best that we could expect. It's quite a small staff at this point in my day. There's so many people left. But nevertheless, you guys do a great job, and keep up the good work. You guys are always meeting, and, and I enjoy being part of, of a lot of those meetings. One thing I'll note, one of the issues that we've been talking about is the South Ward and the issues around the school district. This is the key time to resolve any issues with the school district. Once they get into that new year, there's no more changing for the school once they, they start a year. So we may wanna revisit any of those issues that we've been discussing with the school district in the next month or two, before they get started. I'll stay on that same note. Right out here with East Broad Street, Greenwood Street. East Broad Street heading west. It used to be, still known as, but it used to be a right turn lane and a straight lane. It is no longer a right turn lane and a straight lane. It is only one lane. I think we could possibly help avoid maybe an incident or an accident by creating some sort of signage, maybe painting a line maybe on the side of the street or something. Indicating a solid line of sorts. Some people who understand the, the traffic, and they're following it as it is now, and other people who just are used to the way it's always been, where you get over to the right and swing to the right, could end up causing an incident. We could help clarify it maybe out of at least a solid line. Maybe some signs should refer that to parking trap, to add one more to your, to your left.
Is there parking on, on that corner? There was a park between driveway and... There is no yellow, any?
It's still left open as it is, which gives everybody just the indication that they can still make that the right turning lane. And somebody who understands the, the flow of traffic, and maybe just straighten traffic, and try to turn against somebody who's moving alongside them, could cause an incident. You could help clarify it by, I think, a simple solid line, and get your box...
That makes sense. There's only a possibility to beat on the road, it'd be a better solution, but inside, if you have a...
Yeah. Little bit late, but tip my hat to the fathers, in recognition of the past Father's Day. Follow up with Summer Festival, the big hit, once again, lots of people, beautiful day. Thank you to all the volunteers, Chamber Historical Society, and all the volunteers that helped make that a great success. I will note that, over the weekend, there were some vandals tipping over some, some of the port John's, and our staff did find some names, and where the tracks of some people down on the, on the... Kinda, kinda nice to see that, that, that flow of, I appreciate that this happened, and that, and that work that they do.
I expect that will trace that again, too.
Yeah, it's always a bonus to, to get that, and that helps bring people out. August 5th, again, is coming up. The summer will be ended before we know it. I know it's at the beginning, but it moves quick. August 5th is gonna be our night out, National Night Out. It's coming around quick. I was at the Salvation Army for their end of dinner just the other night, and it's always a pleasure. I did a heck of a job writing a note for those people who were there to, to share that, as I participated in their musical event there. I'm gonna give a shameless plug, but I do have tickets. Anybody who wants to buy tickets to this carnival, kids carnival. And they don't necessarily have to take the tickets with them. They could just, like, pay me the ten dollars for the, for the tickets, council members, friends that, that... We can give them back to Salvation, and they can make sure kids who don't have money can go and have a good time at this carnival. I do have those tickets. Shameless plug. Shameless plug. Some, some council members have already reached out to me and, and urged, I won't give any names. I thank you.
I'm a friendly historian, man.
Yeah.
Full color, top of the pool.
Shameless. I think, I think, I think I can wrap up with that, but thank you very much.
Solicitor's report. We have the reports of the various departments of the borough.
Make the motion to accept it, it's ready.
We have a motion by Dave, accepted by Dan, to accept the reports of the various departments of the borough. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody on the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Nice to have you. Unfinished business.
I think we're in a one, a chief status report on the second round relief of cameras, or parks, et cetera.
I had the company up here the week, and we went through the top of High Rise, looked over the whole system, and went off the top of the High School, the Southward Playground, the West End of Town, North End of Town, East End of Town, for different locations of cameras. It's currently at their engineering department. And we're gonna get together, come up and say, this one is one, and then we'll get a proposal on it. As well as the mobile data terminal, the license plate, the camera for the free control cars. We're gonna, we're working up a proposal on that. And example, Bert was involved, and so I'm gonna get Kathy appraised on it. She's on the camera committee, and giving some camera committee emails. It's been going pretty slow, but I'm trying to give it a push and get it moving, because it's a bit too slow for me. I'm doing the best I can, the camera committee is, to get it moving.
My recollection was that the parks were on, all the parks, I'm just, I'm aware of an incident at the East End Park over the weekend, with break-in. But, I mean, I'm not asking specifically for that park, but, you know, on behalf of all the parks, you know, because I'm confident that vandalism on some level is a, is an issue at each of the parks.
So council voted to put one at South Ward, that one's, you know, gonna be put in, and the High School, council voted on that, wow, you know, they're gonna be put in. And what I was talking to them about was on the West End of Town, I wanted to get all four corners of the borough, any outside, and then move in. So I got them looking at the West End, looking east and west, East End looking west and east, North End looking north and south. We have one at the South End of Town. And we have our cell block, the hallway, and the parking lot out there. That's what we're working on now. That's all of the game locations. And depending on what that costs, we'll see if we have to trim it down or not, or build all those. It's all based on the cost.
If I could. That's what's included in the next phase. There are, you know, multiple phases, and yes, each of the playgrounds, recreation areas are, you know, targets. But it comes down to a line of sight project. So what happens is, the engineers have to come in and find out, you know, the best line of sight to get camera access at East End Playground, and how they will get it to repeat back to the High Rise, or something else that come back here, or something like that. So it ends up being a little more complicated, you know, with the...
I'm not minimizing the, the effort of the engineering required to, but it's, it has been a slow project.
Very slow.
Yeah, so...
It's all getting to work. It's just something slow.
Just trying to keep it moving forward, that's, that's the point. That's the whole reason we're having a company over. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business?
The bills are playing in front of the borough. I reviewed the bills yesterday, and you all were in order, have some questions about some that were answered by Kevin. Make a motion that actually, the justice doctor, for a minute, while I was doing... Make a motion to pay the bills and plans of this in the borough.
Question by Tom, asked by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just one question. Christine, is that included in the papers, or...
Christine quit bills together?
I know, but the payment is...
Oh, yeah, and all the council people should have gotten a...
But is that blog with this?
The bills, no, that's on payroll.
So it's separate?
Yeah, so these are bills from vendors, the materials that we purchased or cherished, and stuff. But Christine's great adjustment goes through payroll.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Nice to have you. Any new business?
Yeah, I, I had a neighbor who lived over my house, and he talked to me about a very large tree. I live at 620 Wink's Broad Street. This neighbor was across the street from me. And from the sidewalk to the, to the front of somebody's house out there, I mean, it's Broad Street, there's, there's a buildup of, of ground. And his neighbor has like a seventy-five foot fir tree. And he's afraid that this tree's gonna fall over sometime. He is on the rescue squad. And he says that he's talked to the rescue squad, that they would be willing to take this tree out. Now, I guess you would have to have property ownership permission to get it. And is this something that our rescue squad can undertake on 309, stop traffic, while it's that kind of tree? I mean, it's, I wish Brian was here to, to, maybe I should talk to him.
Definitely have to have the property ownership permission, that somebody pull you on top of the tree. Whether or not they're called, and if they're doing any work, it involves the, the Penda right-of-way, could be developed by Penda, and called...
And you do have an issue if it is on private property, and then you're using our rescue squad to, to take it down, and then there's a liability that went into this conversation for, for the borough, on private property.
And other people may want their trees removed.
Oh, yeah.
So this is not a good...
No.
I'll get back on that. Any other new business? I, I, I...
Oh, okay. Brian, Tom, and myself, I've expected a series of interviews to fulfill two positions. I would like to make a motion to fulfill the utility clerk position, which is Donna. And I would like to ask council to accept Robin Rex as the individual to fill that position for his duty part.
What was the rate? What was their rate?
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Is it a second?
A second.
Another question, is there a start date?
It was three weeks.
Approximately three weeks.
Is there a paper that starts in roughly three weeks? What do you think would be like, order about three weeks from yesterday? Is the motion a second? Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this more?
So you said it was Donna's position?
Donna's retiring in September.
So you're hiring somebody to commit a larger position?
The position is utility clerk.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
So we're hiring Robin Rex as a utility clerk, and thirteen dollars, and we're saying utility clerk, thirteen dollars. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Nice to have you.
I have one piece of new business. Just, we had a meeting with the, the auto workers, the union representatives. We had requested that they approve an agreement with Redco. In, in the past, we've had Redco workers come and do some work over the summer. We, we don't, they do it for free. We, we don't pay them. But for them to do it, if we have a local union workforce, they have to have the union representative sign off on the agreement and approve for us to be able to do this. We had a meeting the other, the other night, and they said that they're not willing to do that. They're not willing to approve that agreement, so, you know, it's... So we're not gonna have that opportunity this time. I don't know that Redco workers would be available, but I did want to let council know that they, they have refused to, to sign off on, on allowing this path, that Redco program.
Any other new business?
I just, I would, anything on marriage position?
I was just gonna do that.
So no more new business?
Well, I would, I would like to make a motion to clear Bobby G. Murphy as the Assistant Borough Secretary to fill Purin's position.
A second then. Is the motion a second? Give a starting rate? Do a motion a second, do a starting rate?
Starting rate, but not.
Do a starting date?
No.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes.
This is kind of a little surprise call. You're doing this without telling me first? Is this the way you wanted to conduct, to make a motion?
Well, I did make my decision very clear when we spoke last week, that I was not for the other candidate.
Okay, but the other three people were for it. So you were in the minority on whom you selected. And then you want to make a motion to hire the person with the newspaper? How fair is that?
It comes down to physical responsibility that this council has and the rate that is being offered to the individual that you have favored is outrageous.
Outrageous?
Absolutely.
We want to do an executive session about this.
I'm going to make a motion to table this motion for right now.
Motion to table, is there a second?
No, no.
Second. A motion by Dave and a second by Dan in favor of this motion. See if we can go a motion, so we don't have any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, aye. The motion is tabled, passed.
Motion, not going to executive session, discuss personality.
A second. Do a motion by Dave and a second by Bethany, we go into the executive session and discuss personality. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
I just do that.
Session to discuss personal matters.
Make a motion to take off the table the motion to hire Bobby G. Buckley as the Assistant Borough Secretary, is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Do a motion by Dave, a second by Bethany, to take that motion off the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, aye. Motion before us is to hire Bobby G. Buckley. Do a motion in a second. Under the question, who gets clarification of salary, start date?
The salary is thirteen fifty per hour and the start date would be approximately two hundred.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. No.
That's too difficult. Yeah.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye.